I'd like to call to order the 5 o'clock meeting of the Enfield Board of Education on August 27th. Please stand for a moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance.
With Ms. Cushman.
Before conducting the business of the Board this evening, please join me for a moment of silence. And the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Fire evacuation. In the unlikely event of a fire, you can exit out the rear chamber doors and out to the parking lot, or you can go out the doors over here and to the left down the stairs and then out to the back parking lot. Kathy, can I have roll call, please?
Ms. Cushman.
Here.
Mr. Chinitis.
Here.
Mr. Kober. Mrs. LeBlanc.
Here.
Mrs. Pickett.
Here.
Mr. Ryder.
Here.
Mrs. Akri.
Here.
Dr. Kalman.
Here.
Chairwoman Riley.
Here.
Okay, so we have four guests this evening. We have Chief Fox and our awesome new group of SSOs. Okay, and Mr. Longi.
Yep, so we have Chief here, as Chairwoman said, and he's going to give a brief presentation on our new SSO program. We also have our SSOs in the audience. Thank you for coming, guys. Appreciate that. So Chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. So good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, all of you, for the opportunity to join you today. It certainly was very worthwhile to have the chance downstairs to chat informally with several of you. If I didn't get to you, my apologies, but now the opportunity to present to all of you formally and to roll out the SSO program. By way of explanation, we have had many meetings of the Joint Town Council Board of Ed Security Working Group and the very worthwhile idea from the chairperson to present to all of you and in a broader sense to the community at large where we were before the school year began. So my focus was on the material and the information that I thought you would find most productive. And then, of course, during the presentation or afterwards, if there are any questions that we can answer for you, we'd be more than happy to do so. Thank you once again for the chance to join you. After we were given the instructions in my world from Mr. Bronson and in a broader sense from the council and from all of you to begin and to undertake the process, we began, and chronologically it just makes the most sense to present it to you this way as well, with what I would call the applicant vetting, so that you do understand the row of gentlemen that are two rows behind me. The process that they went through to ensure that we were going to provide you with the folks that you wanted consisted of a written application, verification of compliance with what we call LiOSA or HR 218. More on that to follow on the next slide. I realize that may be a... It's cop lingo at this point. I'll make sense out of it for you in just a minute. There was then an oral interview panel, as I know that you are aware of, but I will also underscore that the three folks that sat on that panel, myself, the Director of Human Resources on the town side, who doubles as the Assistant Town Manager, and Mr. Longi. And the part that I would emphasize for you is that each panelist held full veto authority over any given applicant. And I think it's important that we emphasize that so that you understand that the folks that come before you, the folks that will be in your schools as of Thursday, did have unanimity in terms of their support. There was a full background investigation that was conducted by our Detective Division. They looked under every branch. They overturned every stone. We then did do the required psychological examinations. That is an intensive written followed by oral interviews with our psychologist and then a medical examination. The individuals who are before, two rows behind me and in front of you successfully passed all of those phases. Throughout this process, I've been using the phrase HR 218 and LiOSA, and I've been using those phrases interchangeably. I think the vast majority of you may have at least some understanding as to what that is. Please allow me to go and flesh that out so that, once again, it increases your comfort level and equally importantly, the community's comfort level. 18 U.S.C. 926(c) was a post-9/11 creation. It is a piece of federal law. The United States Code now allows retired police officers, that phrase being defined broadly in the federal law, who retired in good standing so long as they had 10 years of service contingent upon recurrent annual firearms qualification to carry their firearms anywhere in the country. This was a post-9/11 "how do we make the nation safer" piece of legislation, separated in a good standing, 10 years of service aggregate in nature. Connecticut took it a step further, and you'll remember that when this town, Mr. Bronson and the folks that were here certainly before me, stood up this program with several of you the first time, they were literally building the plane as they were flying it. They didn't have the advantage of 10-244(a), which we have now. 10-244(a) comes along and was actually modeled after the Enfield creation, which was, of course, the post-Sandy Hook decision. And 10-244(a) qualifies the standards in a slightly stricter fashion. So the only individuals that are authorized to be in schools working as armed guards, armed SSOs, are individuals that are currently certified police officers or individuals from the Connecticut State Police that meet the other requirements, federal law enforcement officers, retired in good standing, or individuals from out of state that met that same criteria. So it's just important from the jump that you understand the folks that you have coming into this meet the federal standard and they meet the more exacting Connecticut standard as well. Once the individuals were selected, once they were vetted, once they came onboard, we have put them through about two and a half weeks of training that involved 21 Enfield Police Department officers and their individual areas of subject matter expertise and two Board of Education instructors that'll be doing the PMT training with them tomorrow. I won't read it all to you, but you can see that the major subject areas that were hit, crisis intervention, the active shooter was the single biggest block of it, firearms, and that included tactics, that included simunitions, which is, for our purposes, you can think about it almost like as a sophisticated paintball round, if you will, and then, of course, firearms qualification. They received tactical combat care, medical training. They went to, and I have a quick anecdote here that I think you'll really enjoy, they went to the required police academy training. State statute mandates that individuals working as SSOs go through an eight-hour training block, insert pause dramatically there for just that reason. Eight hours is what the state mandated. We gave our folks two and a half weeks. And I'm very pleased to tell you this one anecdotal account, that during the class at the post academy, there was an individual, I don't know from which department, that apparently raised his hand and stood up and said, "Well, this is all great, but how come you folks aren't giving us the practical stuff?" And our Enfield people kind of looked at one another and thought to themselves, "Well, that's exactly what our town did provide to them." And I just, I think that's gold, and I think that's a statement, regardless of where individuals might have felt about this at the outset, that if we're going to do it, we're committed to doing it appropriately, and that is where the eight individuals behind me are right now. We also doubled down for... We doubled down, not in an effort to be draconian, but in an effort to make sure the BOE policies were respected and the town protocol was respected. We doubled down on what we would refer to as defensive tactics training. So they received a block of that from an in-house EPD expert, and they're also receiving the PMT training, the physical management technique training that they would operate under if interacting with a student as the Board of Ed requested and wanted. I thought you might find it worthwhile. I put together just a few slides with some photos. Sergeant Roscoe is not wearing an ill-conceived necktie in that photo, as much as it might look that way at first. That is gauze, and he just has it on his person, and he's practicing, he's training, and the SSOs would thereafter be practicing on how to pack a wound. I don't need to say this, I could probably say it many times tonight, we all are here because we hope this never happens, but when it happens, after the worst of it is over, I want people and you want people that are equipped and prepared to take the next steps, and that includes the medical care. So that's what you see taking place in the photo to the left. Photo to the right, you'll see what we call one rescuer victim drag, and you're going to see that young lad come up a couple of times in photos. I will share with you that he was not a hostage. In fact, he got credit for his Boy Scout project for helping us out, and he is the son of one of our coworkers who was more than happy, thought it was a fun way to spend a couple of days of his summer vacation. There he is, receiving a tourniquet application in the left-hand photo, and you'll see two rescuer victim carry in the photo on the right. Last set of photos, combat casualty care. That is now retired Sergeant Dan Casali, one of our SSOs in the photo to the left, who is tending to the wounds that are suffered by our mock victim, and then firearms qualification in the photo to the right. Finally, the same room clearing techniques that your Enfield police officers are trained in, your SSOs have now been trained in. And it's not that it's squirrely and it's not that it's super secret, it just doesn't really merit a great deal of your attention here, but they have received the up-to-date national model program and level of training that I've received, that the captain has received, that the deputy chief and the other captain have received, and that's what you see evidenced in the photos that are before you. We had some questions very early on about how these folks were going to be equipped and how they were going to be attired. Everything that we had asked for is in, with the exception of one asterisk, and we knew that from the beginning. And I will tell you that as the crunch time got crunchier throughout the course of the winter and the spring, and all of you and the folks from the town council, folks in my world, were very cognizant of the timelines that we were under, we did pay attention to what's it going to take to get everything in in time. Everything that you see, from the 9/11 pants, body armor, cold weather gear, reflective vests, duty belts, firearm holster, ammunition, tourniquet, pouch, everything you see, with the exception of the shirts, has arrived. In the interim, and the shirts are on back order, there just wasn't much we could do about that. The SSOs all have identifications on lanyards, and they will have badges on their hips. They'll be wearing personally-owned golf-style shirts, but they will be recognizable and they will be identifiable. Those shirts are going to be in as soon as we can get them in. The poor captain has been pestering the vendor with great regularity to try to make all that happen. And then at last, before I get to the actual introduction of the individuals and give you a quick rundown on their bios, Mr. Longi and I worked through in some detail the standards that I think you and the community want to have a comfort level with, and I believe you're going to be very satisfied with them. School security officers, you know, some folks in our community might want them very actively involved. Some folks might want them to be a little bit closer to passive until and unless something really awful happened. What's the middle ground? SSOs will only physically intercede in situations when, number one, they're requested by a member of the school administration, and that's the principal, the vice principal, someone at that upper admin level, or when physical intervention is immediately necessary to prevent injury. So we needed to deal with not just that potential active aggressor, but what about the kids that are in a fight in a hallway? At what point do you want SSO involvement? Because I could envision being before you if the SSO was too aggressive. I could envision being before you if the SSO was not aggressive enough. I thought that language was a fair compromise. Mr. Longi was comfortable with it as well. Please allow me to introduce you to the individual team members. For each one, I have their name, I have their assignment, I have their individual, a quick rundown on some of the high points of their careers, and then I'll be in a position to wrap it up after just a couple of more slides after that. So seated behind me is retired Enfield Police Sergeant Dan Casali. Sergeant Casali is a 41-year veteran of the law enforcement field, 36 of those years with the Enfield Police Department. For the last 10 years, he was our detective sergeant. So that makes him number two within the unit that goes out and does the whodunit, can it be solved, and they did it. And he did it, and that unit did it well for years. He's also state-certified as a police instructor in multiple disciplinary areas. Next up for you, I have Richard Conlin. Richard Conlin's going to be assigned to the Eagle Academy. The interplay between the Eagle Academy and the high school will be the subject of discussion in a slide in just a minute, but Mr. Conlin comes to us with 36 years of law enforcement experience from the Agawam Police Department, off-duty. You'll find him on a golf course or out fishing in his free time. I need to advance the slide as I'm speaking a little bit better. There we go. Next up is going to be a friendly, familiar face for the Enfield Public School community. Gerald DeBerry is one of our returning security officers. 23 years of law enforcement experience with the Department of Motor Vehicles, five years as a part-time Hebron Police Officer. He's been with you for seven years as an unarmed Enfield School Security Officer. He was at Prudence Crandall, he's going back to Prudence Crandall, United States Air Force Academy veteran, and his personal interests, off-duty time, anything automotive, customizing cars, customizing motorcycles. Folks, all these people are phenomenal, but I will tell you in particular that when Mr. Jerry Dowd came in for an interview, as much as there was a danger, I felt like I was going to rob Peter to pay Paul, I thought to myself, "Why am I not giving you an EPD application?" While only a 20-year veteran, which is a full law enforcement career, although in some cases it's half of some of the other people that he's now going to be working with, 20 years with Granby, retiring as a detective, previously serving as an FTO, a member of the Department's Juvenile Review Board, the Youth Services Advisory Board within the Granby PD, a state-certified EMT. The caliber of individuals, I believe, speaks for themselves. Another friendly, familiar face in both my world and in your world is going to be Joe Filmore. Joe Filmore served in law enforcement for 26 years, 21 of those years we were very proud to call him one of ours. 21 years with the Enfield PD, his last eight years as a school resource officer. So he knows your program, he knows your schools, he knows how this works, and we couldn't be prouder of him. Thereafter, he retired from me and he went over to you. Three years with the Enfield Public School System, including work as a behavioral tech and an unarmed SSO, and I'm quite pleased that he's back again. Fred Harpen, you know, our recruiting efforts were fun and funny as we tried to figure out who we could get and who was out there. Fred Harpen is the brother of one of our other retired officers. Sir Fred Harpen comes to us with 33 years of experience from the Agawam Police Department and has a great interest in a wide array of outdoor activities. The winner of the seniority test, and ladies and gentlemen, 43 years of experience, this is an individual that I would call sir, right? 43 years of law enforcement experience as our own Ed Theorian with the EPD, retired in good standing, retired in great standing. And in our world, it is rather a badge of honor to be the senior-most officer, and those officers wear badge number one. And Ed Theorian retired as our senior-most officer, badge number one. He'll be over at Stowe. Additionally, a veteran of the United States Navy, and in his off-duty time, he enjoys playing the guitar and he enjoys woodworking. I didn't know he played the guitar, so it was educational for me as well. Lastly, at the SSO level is Frank Torres. 21 years of law enforcement experience with Connecticut DMV, but he wasn't content to just do 21 years of work in 21 years. At the same time, he was also doing those same 21 years of service with the Army National Guard. Two years as well of prior service as an unarmed Enfield SSO, and in his off-duty time, he enjoys fishing in his off-duty hours. Finally, in terms of personal introduction, and at the risk of embarrassing my contemporary, who I barely got to come up here and sit next to me, it's a true pleasure and a credit to this community to be able to tell you that I had a volunteer. I had a volunteer raise his hand to supervise this program. As you know, the town council, the Board of Ed, some of the meetings that we had, there were some energetic discussions about what we were going to do for a supervisor, and eventually the town council, the leadership, Mr. Bronson, Mr. Belinda, "Why don't we return EPD to its target staffing level with two captains?" Captain Nolan was an incumbent captain at that time, and he was living high and living happy, and he could have said, "I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing." And instead, what he said was, "You know what? That program interests me, so we're going to do a captain's promotion. That guy's going to take a lot of the work that I'm doing," and that's Captain Jim Held, who's also behind me tonight. But Captain Nolan, who didn't have to do it, said, "That program interests me, so I want to take it. I want to supervise it." Captain Nolan did good, and the town of Enfield did good. This is a 20-year veteran of the Enfield PD, four years' service prior to that with the United States Air Force. Educated locally, this is St. Bernard's to Fermi High School to the Air Force, stop at TSA if I'm not mistaken, and then local boy comes home, and now he's elevated to tied for third, if you will, within the organizational structure, and he's going to run this program for you. His resume is outstanding. You can see it in the fourth bullet that's down. Additionally, another one of my double-duty people, 27 years of simultaneous service with the North Thompsonville Fire Department, currently serving at the rank of captain. I asked the captain whether I could share this last tidbit with you before I did, and he agreed. The captain has two children in the Enfield School System, so is he committed to the safety of your children? Is he committed to making sure that they are, that they're going to be okay if something bad happens? Does he want to make sure that the people that were vetted were vetted appropriately? I cannot think of a better litmus test than his children are your children. You may have counted eight plus a supervisor, so we're working our way in the next slide to good news, but at this moment, it is eight plus a supervisor. So after a lot of back and forth about what we can do and where we can afford, and I put little air quotes around that word and I use it lightly, but where we can afford right now to not place SSOs, you have SROs at JFK and at the high school. So until January 1st, hold that thought for just a minute, until January 1st, you're going to have the SROs in place at both schools, and you're going to continue to have them after January 1st, but with only eight SSOs immediately available, taking into account the applications, the people that withdrew, folks that weren't necessarily qualified, your best use of the eight are at the schools that we just identified for you. You will still have an armed presence through the SROs at the high school and at JFK, and this is what the future holds for you. We have four additional SSOs who are currently being vetted. They all look good. Frankly, they all look very good. They, however, have retirement dates from their current agencies that are like 10-1, 11-1, 12-1. They are almost 20 years into their career, and then they are ready to retire and start the next chapter. As you can imagine, they're not going to leave at 19 years and 10 months even for us. So those four are being vetted. We expect the four of them to come onboard and be onboarded sometime after the first of the year. They will then go through the two, two-and-a-half-week training program that I described for you, and then they will join their contemporaries. We may see some shifting of individual peoples, individual people, persons, people, but then you will have the eight at the locations I've described, two at the high school, two at JFK, in addition to the SROs that you have at that location. If we should have any openings between now and then, the town will re-initiate our recruiting efforts as we've been doing throughout the summer and the latter part of the spring. It's my hope that that answers the vast majority of the questions that you had and that it answers them thoughtfully and articulately, but certainly I and the balance of my team are more than happy to address any remaining concerns that anyone might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Fox. Very, very much appreciated that you guys came tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
And agreed to the meet and greet. That was really great to meet everybody downstairs. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question for the board first.
Sure.
Is anybody else getting a bad glow in there? I'm getting a headache watching that.
I think the TV needs to be pushed down.
Oh, God.
It wasn't even on my head.
Yeah.
Whoops.
I still got one.
But it's not as bad.
Is this a little better?
Maybe if we close the window.
Is that better?
Well, now it's just the light.
It's the light, it's not the window.
Yeah.
It's better.
Dr. Kalman, go for it.
That was a great presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I just, I'm kind of concerned about attrition. I mean, how many applied for the position and how many were rejected? And if you lose applicants or if you lose people on your team, how long is it going to take to replace them and get their replacements up to speed?
Sure. So the first part of the question is, there were several applicants. I could go through my notes and get you the exact number, but I would tell you, we probably had seven, eight, or nine that applied, and with all due respect to them, may not have actually read what the qualifications were. So many of them were vetted because they simply were not LiOSA, HR 218, 10-244(a) eligible. They were excised at that point. Thereafter, as we went through the process, we had, I believe, three that were looking good that then withdrew midway through. One very attractive candidate, sergeant from out of state, decided to remain with his own agency. A woman that we had who had been a CSA, a Community Service Aid, within Enfield PD after her full law enforcement career with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, suffered a family issue and she needed to provide a little bit more direct care, she withdrew. There were one or two others that withdrew throughout the process, and the reasons weren't always clear. So I would say there were eight or nine that were purged at the beginning. There were three or four that withdrew on their own. In terms of backfill, and I actually should have mentioned this, I should have woven this in, please know that if we lose anybody at any of these schools, because we've identified this as our minimum level of coverage, for the long term or for the short term, somebody gets sick, somebody gets a flat tire, someone has a family crisis, someone has a doctor's appointment, we're going to be backfilling for those positions with an Enfield Police Officer. So I apologize if I didn't make that as clear as I could have earlier, but you will have an individual present at each school from now going forward. So to the extent that your question intimates, somebody leaves in the short term, somebody leaves in the long term, we're going to have someone there to replace them. The hiring process for new individuals, if we do need to reinstitute it, you know, we push it out, how quickly do they get back to us? A week, a couple of weeks, two or three weeks? You know, we advertise for a couple of months, a few months, and we had some folks that didn't apply until more recently, a month or so ago, which means that it took them a couple of months to either find the posting or be interested in the posting. We can probably get them rushed through thereafter, all the phases within a month. And then what really does create a bit of a choke point for us is the need to put together the training program. Now, you would want it no other way, and I would want it no other way. We couldn't do it any other way, but the personnel commitment of my 20 or 21 and then your two to run the training program for two and a half weeks for a onesie or a twosie, we have to do a cost-benefit at some point. That is why, for example, we have these four that are becoming eligible to come onboard through the fall and into the early winter. We're waiting until we have all four of them so we can do all four in one group after 1-1. To some degree, the answer is a moving target, but I'm comfortable sharing with you that in the absence of an SSO, you'll have someone wearing this patch to replace them in your schools. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Miss Pickett?
Sorry, you know me, I'm going to have a lot.
More than happy, ma'am.
Again, it's nothing in... I really thank you, Chief Fox and Captain Nolan. That was a heavy and triggering presentation. I know how serious that you're taking this, and I know that you're going to do your best to keep our kids safe. I truly do believe that.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I do have some questions and considerations. I do understand that it's a sensitive topic, so if I ask anything that could potentially pose a security risk or is not appropriate, you can just be like, "Amanda, that's not appropriate."
Of course, thank you.
I'm more than happy to take that. So first, I just want clarity on the school security model, because I think it was important that you referenced the SROs. So I just want to make sure I'm getting this right. We will have two SROs at the high school, one SRO at the JFK. Will we still have a roaming SRO in the district?
You have two SROs at the high school, you have two SROs at JFK. They are potentially, the minimum staffing for those schools is one and one, but as we go into the school year, everybody is healthy and everybody is back to work, so you're scheduled for two and two until, as I need to, somebody takes a vacation day or somebody is off sick. So your minimum staffing at each is one and one. Two and two is the ideal and more often than not number. The roving SRO patrols, the overtime patrols, which I believe you are referring to, you do not have that any longer. The funding for that was a portion of the funding for this.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And just so I'm clear, the SROs are uniformed armed officers as well. So they're fully uniformed and they're armed as well.
The SROs, the SROs look like an Enfield Police Officer, or they are just designated to a school as their full-time duty assignment? Yes, ma'am.
We currently have eight armed guards, hopefully getting 12. So I'm wondering about coverage, and I saw how we're getting to cover JFK... So I'm wondering about coverage, and I saw how we're getting to cover JFK and the high school. We have programming at Alcorn, Fermi, and Eagle Academy. Are those looking at being covered at all by any type of security or safety model?
So Eagle Academy is part of the high school coverage, and I believe that the slide that I showed you for Mr. Conlon, if I'm not mistaken, actually identified him as Eagle Academy. So he is Eagle Academy in addition to your SROs. The balance of the schools, that has not been in my, that has not been in my assignment to date.
Okay, thank you. And what about our parochial schools in town?
Again, that has not been in my assignment to date.
Perfect. And all of the positions are going to be supervised by Captain Nolan?
That is correct.
Perfect. And we, there are other security staff, so Donald Crabtree remains on staff. Where does he fit in the model of kind of who he's being supervised by?
Mr. Crabtree is a board employee, and Captain Nolan is a town employee. They work swimmingly together. Mr. Crabtree is a pleasure to work with. I don't know if he's here, but I'd say that if he was, and I'd say that if he wasn't. So you have, you kind of have your rep who is responsible for security, infrastructure, security mantraps, security, the camera system. I have my SSO supervisor, and they work together. I suspect that the call log between the two of them and the text log between the two of them is, is burning up a great deal of town data.
Perfect. Awesome. Just wanted like clarity in kind of who's covering what and how that kind of works out in budgeting as well. Last, or no, not really, a couple more questions? One is around clarity on role. I heard a lot that I'm going to ask some questions about student behavior, but one that I didn't hear that I'm going to probably make some remarks later about, but is really about the arrival and dismissal safety, especially on Route 5 and the high school. Will they have any support in providing some traffic support on Route 5?
So I mean, I've responded to this equally energetically several times, for you folks and for constituents that have written in. When we get to two SSOs at the high school and two SROs at the high school, that is a discussion at that point I'd be willing to have. I will tell you, I understand your anecdotal concerns. The data does not bear it out. That fact notwithstanding, I do understand that is important to you. When we get to four, then that's a discussion that I'm certainly willing to have. Right now, with two, I frankly think it ill-advised to pull one of those two, or potentially one of the one, all the way down the driveway to be doing traffic on Route 5 and leaving the entrance and exit of the school at the most prolific time in the day uncovered. When we reach that four, that is certainly something that the joint Town Council Board of Ed Committee, with your input, is welcome to revisit.
All right. Yeah, or we can maybe at some point look at how we can staff somebody to come over and help us out. But another question I have, I'm really concerned about more the internal safety, especially with our staff cuts, and folks that I know used to support behavior, the blue shirt security team, many of our BTs, our deans, they won't be in our schools. So I heard a little bit about responding to student behavior, which is not something that I thought was part of the job role in MOU, so that was a little bit concerning to me, especially since so many of our students have IEPs and specific plans around their supports. So I guess, and maybe this is more of a question for school leadership, how are we going to ensure proper protocols around responding to student misbehavior, and we are not going to be increasing arrests and suspensions and escalated situations?
So I thought the chief did a good job spending some time on this slide. We had the same exact conversation. If there's a major safety issue, we both felt that the SSOs needed to get involved. So that's why the restraint training occurred. It is a concern. Your concerns are valid, Amanda. There are concerns about staffing at the high school, and if an SSO is requested by the principal or vice principal because they need help, the expectation is that they will help.
Thank you. I know that was a tough question, so I appreciate you.
It's a conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate you putting that in part of the presentation. I know that's a concern that's been raised, so I appreciate that. The next is around budget, which isn't maybe so much your role to keep eyes and ears on, although I'm sure it is. With the change in the model being full-time, my guess is these 12 will be full-time officers. I heard potential overtime for, for coverage or backfilling. Will, will we have a clear picture on kind of the spending of this, and can we get an update on that at some point?
Well, I mean, I'm sure it's going to be available. There are pieces of that that are beyond my purview. There are 12 employees, or there will be 12 employees, there are employees. The number of hours that need to be covered didn't change, so the projection that I gave to the Town Council and then shared with all of you originally, that number does stand. We are faced with some of these individuals because of the retirement packages they had that are going to need health insurance, and that's over on the town side. The need to backfill on overtime does increase the cost, but it's, you know, the other alternative is that I tell you that somebody took a vacation day or a holiday or a sick day, and your school is uncovered. And I perceive, I'm sure accurately, that that is not the direction anyone wants to go. So those numbers will be available. I don't know that I'm going to have them in terms of a rolling total. I'm going to have an overtime cost-out code that we're going to be using for police officers. So a portion of your answer comes from fiscal, finance, HR, and a portion comes from the town.
Perfect, thank you. And then, kind of the last major concern for me is really around data collection. So this is a new program. So I'm wondering whose responsibility it will be to keep data on the student interactions for this program and our SRO program. Unfortunately, we are one of the highest arrest rates across the state, so I really want to make sure that we are keeping track of who the students are interacting with in particular. So I don't know if that's a school duty or an SRO or SSO duty, but if I can get some clarity on who will be keeping that data.
Well, SSOs do not have arrest authority, so SSOs will not be making arrests. They will not have that role. Therefore, that will not be triggering anything of that sort. If an SRO ever makes an arrest, those, of course, are fully documented pursuant to agency procedures. I defer to Mr. Longy for anything school-based that he might think appropriate.
That was the same answer I would have given in terms of the SSO. If a restrain has to be made, we fill out all the proper restraint training paperwork and gets reported.
And then I guess the last question that I have is, if anybody has any questions, concerns on the school's security model, is Captain Nolan their contact, or is there a district, how are we kind of like sharing where kind of questions can be?
Well, if it was not a security-based question, Captain Nolan or I, you know, within reason, certainly are able to answer constituent questions. To the extent that a question dovetails over into the board's province, I would refer that to Mr. Longy or whoever else you directed that call or to.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the lengthy questions. I appreciate you taking the time to answer them thoroughly, and I appreciate all of you coming to Enfield and helping to protect our students.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. LeBank?
Sure, I have a few questions. First of all, I would, I just want to thank Captain Nolan. I really appreciate you heading up this program. I also appreciate the fact that you have kids in our school. I know outside of this kind of life, we have had many interactions that have been positive, so I'm very happy to see you in this role, and I thank you for that. I guess, I just have a few concerns. I don't know how you're going to be able to address them, but not so much in the K through 2, to 3 through 5. I'm really worried about, or I shouldn't say worried, concerned, questions around how we're going to handle those crises in Enfield High and JFK, because there is leeway for an SRO, SRO to deem that they have to intervene because they feel that, you know, injury or safety is, is not being practiced. And obviously, they've had training on it. So, I mean, I think that people that haven't been in our schools, especially at the JFK level, granted, we have the SROs, I think we have more crisis in our schools than people understand, and especially when you're getting with the older kids. We really need to learn and look at that about using judgment, and would there be more of a learning curve and deferment on the SROs before the SROs would jump in, or, and that's like a really vague, roundabout question, but I think it's something we need to think about, especially with our older kids, our bigger kids, where there is more physical altercations and different things like that.
Well, I mean, that was, that was a very delicate balance that I believe, to the best of our ability, we were able to try to reflect in this slide. There were, there were two extremes here, and we could have adopted either one. I did not feel that I had a horse in this race. We could have adopted the model, that the SSO was there to deal with the active deadly force aggressor, and that they were to, I don't mean to say this in a disparaging way, but they were to stand around like a potted plant and not get involved in a, in a fisticuffs situation, because that wasn't their job. And where one bad, one bad cellphone video...
Right.
Posted to the open forum from seeing the program fall apart. On the other hand, if we don't intercede, if you do intercede and you intercede too aggressively or perceived to be too actively, then someone's upset about that, and if we don't perceive, someone's going to say, what are we paying you for? What are you doing? You're, you know, you've got some degree of autonomy and authority, you're fit, you're trained, you're supposed to get involved, and you've got some, you know, teacher or teachers that might be older, they might be younger, they might not be as big, they might not be as strong. I wouldn't want to arm wrestle Joe Fillmore, right? And your guys just stood there. So what we tried to do was strike this delicate balance, and can I guarantee to a, to a, to an absolute that there won't be some meeting or discussion in the future where some instance occurs and someone has said it was too much or too little? My world doesn't allow guarantees.
Right.
What I believe that we have for you is a standard that recognizes, one, your representative says, or your representative's representative says, I need help right now, and I don't have an SRO, or an SRO isn't available because I'm at an elementary school.
Right.
And you're a quasi-government official, please come and help. Or an instance where, forgive the dramatics here, the fist is back here and it's about to be launched, and I've got an SSO who's going to stand there and watch it happen? No. And frankly, I don't think they could live with themselves.
Right.
30 years, 36 years, 41, 43 years of law enforcement experience. So we created the always vague second standard that you see. You know, that when the law doesn't want to give you an absolute answer, it likes to retreat to the word reasonable, and that's effectively what we've written for you in prong number two. We're open to further discussions on it, but I think that hits the bellwether that, that satisfies both of those objectives and plants us somewhere in the middle.
No, I appreciate your clarification on that, and I think, you know, it's subjective. And I think cellphone videos show what initially happened in that 10-second clip, but we don't know what happened before, and we don't know what happened afterwards. So it's, it's really subjective, but I appreciate you guys putting your time and effort and thoughts into that. I'm wondering, too, after we get through, you know, six months of the program and the SROs are more ingrained in our, and I, granted, some of you have already been here and understand it, you know, if there's going to be a regroup and say, you know, on different types of training they may deem as more important, or revisiting anything based on what they're seeing in our schools.
I'm always happy to revisit. I don't think anyone's ever going to argue against more training. I would tell you that without having done a canvas of my contemporaries, I would lay money that right now, you're number one for training.
Thank you. The other question I have is, I understand we're going to backfill with Enfield Police Officers, so they're not going to have had the same training as the SROs.
Well, correct. I mean, but they've got the same level of training that the SROs have, and they have the same level of training that they had when they were your roving SROs as well.
And so the backfill means there will be an Enfield Police Officer right in the, okay, not in the car.
Yes, ma'am.
I really hope that, as a school district, there's definite rapport with the building principals and support staff and the SROs, because it's going to be a learning curve for everybody. And like I said, I appreciate the time and diligence that went in. I'm happy to see some familiar faces here. I really appreciate that. And lastly, I just have to say this. Gun violence is the leading cause in children. And I was watching your video, and I'm watching, you know, the injury to the student who bought Boy Scout who volunteered to be there. And I remember in the 80s and the 90s, we would just hide under our desks and the teachers would turn off the light. And it's a really sad state of affairs that our kids are learning active shooter drills, and teachers are in fear of going to work, and we all live in this heightened sense of security. So I appreciate the people that are willing to put themselves out there for the safety of our students and our buildings. It's just a really sad world we live in, that this is something that we have to do. And I just feel like I wanted to say that, because watching that video, just, it, just right to the heart, right? I think those are all the questions I have for now. I think you, you really clarified a lot of information in your presentation, so thank you very much.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
If you don't find a question in this that you can answer at the microphone, I understand. But my concerns, and I want to thank the eight gentlemen that we met tonight, thank you all for coming and for being here, and for introducing yourselves, not only to the nine, or eight of us, Mr. Colbert is away, but to the few parents that came as well. And I appreciate your presentation. But in addition to the 7 to 3, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM bracket, I'm just worried, or I have concerns about like, at the K-5 level, you know, activities, back-to-school events, PTO meetings, things where you're welcoming dozens, you know, if not 100 families to come to see the new building during teacher conferences, or get a freeze pop, play on the playground, you know, that kind of stuff, you know, grade 6 through 12, weekend events, Friday night football games. Is that part of what you see this including?
So that, that is not funded, and that is not scheduled, that has not been part of the instructions or the marching orders that, that were directed to us. I'm not adverse to that, but, and I can't speak for the gentleman behind me, but certainly that's part of a broader discussion that would need to be between all of you and then Town Council officials.
Okay.
Certainly, I have a great deal of pride, as you can imagine, in the level of responsiveness of individuals that wear this patch on their shoulders. We've measured it, we know that it is extremely quick. It was one of the first things I looked at when I got here six and a half years ago for priority calls, how quickly we can put at least one officer on the scene. And obviously, I came from a prior world in the state police where that was not the paradigm, and I was extraordinarily proud of my state police career, but that was not what you get when you're in that environment. Is it instantaneous? It's not instantaneous. So for after-hours events, unless it's budgeted or staffed, it is not, it is not within my current rubric of assignment.
You good, Mr. Ryder?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you want to go, Mr. Ryder?
I'm going to keep it a lot quicker and simpler. Just sitting here and looking at all you guys is like the Vienna, the boys choir or something. It's a view. Chief, your presentation was excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Well said, well spoken, good information. The resumes of you guys sitting out there was very impressive, especially the Air Force boys, growing up in the Air Force for 18 years, and those that play golf, because I started when I was four years old. So you guys will do good, I know that. Thank you.
Okay. So Chief Fox, thank you very much for coming this evening. Thank you for answering everyone's questions. Thank you to the eight dedicated gentlemen that are sitting behind you. You guys are amazing, and thank you for coming back. It means a lot, at least to me, that you guys are there and you're going to be protecting our kiddos. And while you're here, I just wanted to say also, thank you to the EPD for putting up the speed limit signs and the bus passing violation sign that's out in front of Town Hall. Thank you for that as well. And thank you for your cooperation with us. It's very much appreciated.
Our pleasure, thank you. We wish you a good evening.
Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Longy, superintendent's report, when you are ready. We'll give him time to get out.
Okay, thank you, Chairwoman Riley, appreciate it. Just have a few things tonight for you, so pardon it, it'll be just a few minutes here. So pardon it, it'll be just a few minutes here. Enclosed in your packet is our student breakfast and lunch prices for the 24-25 school year. This information has been posted on the website and has been included in school newsletters. I just want to say that that price has not been increased for many, many, many years. That's a discussion we'll have to have for next year. But right now, Diana was able to keep the price exactly the same. So we have not risen prices in many years. We have a Head Start time adjustment you'll see in your packet. Is a memo from Jaclyn Valley, our early childhood initiatives director. SELC Head Start and Pre-K Steam. Parents have been notified of the time change and this information has also been posted on our website. And that's just to create more consistency. And of course, if you know Jaclyn, she's surveyed every parent and gotten feedback and everything else Ms. Valley does. Thank you very much, Jaclyn. Student transportation update. We've posted bus routes on our website for students that are eligible for transportation. The bus routes can be found on our main page to our website under District Information. And as always, we say it every year, and I think some of you as board members during your comments, we just ask for patience during the first few days. It's typical, if this is as a parent, your first go-around with your child as you're getting them on the bus and off the bus, it can be late arrivals and late drop-offs. Everything's okay. It just usually takes a couple of days for that to happen. But I promise you, parents, it gets quicker and quicker each day. Welcome back, students. We're so incredibly excited to welcome all new and returning students back to the Enfield Public Schools. And we're very excited for this upcoming school year. I do have a few other updates that are not in your agenda, if you'd afford me the time. I just want to talk about the breakfast program. I want to make our families aware that the state-funded free breakfast program from last year has ended and we will return to paid breakfast for those students that do not, do not qualify for free or reduced-price meals. The state of Connecticut is still funding the cost share of meals for those students who are approved for reduced-price meals. For these students, there will be no charge for reduced-price approved students for one breakfast and one lunch per day. Also, on a side, I want to urge all families to make sure you fill out the Free and Reduce Form. It's never been more important than this year. Please fill out the Free and Reduce Form. And this form is found on the Enfield Public Schools website under Nutrition Services. And every school has hard copies, so please make sure you are filling out that form. Little update on staffing. Currently, we're 99% staffed for opening day. And it's not because we don't have staff, it's just we have a few building subs. These aren't subs that show up one day and don't the other. These are permanent building subs that are very close to certification. But due to the extreme shortage areas in special education, which I've talked about before, we do have a few long-term substitutes that will start the year as we assist these folks in getting their DSAP license, which is a fancy way for saying an emergency license for these folks in special education. And the only other long-term substitute we have is in world language. We just made that hire the other day. This is a very qualified individual that just needs some help with a DSAP, a durational shortage area certification. But this gentleman has many, many coursework in Spanish. So we're very excited to get him, and that just happened yesterday. Also, just putting a little plug in, a little advertisement here. We still need about 10 paraprofessionals that we're looking for. So if you're watching and you're looking for a job, the board graciously approved a new contract for our paraprofessionals. And I like to say we offer a very competitive rate at this point. So if you're looking for work and you think this might be good work for you, please go to our website, apply. And we are interviewing every day for paraprofessionals and this might be a great career move for you. So just putting a plug in there. I also want to give some good news on the financial front. If you've been following board meetings and especially our meetings with the town council, I was informed this morning that the $275,000 that was set aside from the state's ARP and ESSER money has been moved to the approval process. So that was some good movement for us this morning. Hopefully, this approval process is just a formality and the money should be made available to us soon. And just as a reminder, for those who didn't see, that money will help pay for this year's Into Reading program and help for pay most of this year's Ready Math program. So we fully anticipate that and we finally had some movement. So finally, I want to notify the public that last night, you all, our Board of Education, had a special meeting and they interviewed Dr. Andrew Berrios, who is the current principal of JFK Middle School. And that was for the role of Director of Human Resources. The board voted and approved Dr. Berrios to take on this role. He'll start in this position on Thursday. And I know, understand, this is not the most ideal timing to open school at JFK, but I feel like we do have a good plan in place. Mr. David Yakabuchi, who's a current assistant principal at JFK, I named him the interim principal of JFK while we do a job search for a new principal. And to backfill Mr. Yakabuchi's position at JFK Guidance Counselor, Ms. Shannon Kudrick is going to fill in his spot as interim assistant principal. So we will be fully staffed. We will have a person in charge on that first day of school. And your children at JFK will have the appropriate assistant principals to work with your child. We posted today for a new principal for JFK and our hope is to fill that by September 24th. So if you're a JFK parent, continue to look and we'll get information out for you as we are going to want your input on a night to hear your thoughts on that. So at this time, since we didn't do it publicly, I did ask Dr. Berrios and he was extremely willing to come. I just asked that he could come on up and so we can get him on camera, see who he is. And I think Dr. Berrios would like to say a few words to the board. Thank you.
Good evening, is that too loud? First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the board for your vote of confidence, believing in me. It means the world. And I'm, like I said in several of our meetings, you're going to get my all. I'm going to give you everything I can offer. I want to thank the central office leadership for believing in me as well. And I think most importantly, I want to thank my JFK family for coming to Enfield and sitting in this, pretty sure it was this chair, it might have been a different council chambers, in 2018 and putting my all into JFK through a global pandemic, through an inside-out renovation. The educators there are top-notch, paraprofessionals, behavior techs, the cafeteria workers, the nurses, the custodians, my vice principal team, the admin assistants, IT. That school is a very special place to me. They are like family and they helped me through some really difficult times at JFK. With that, we unified over the last six years and I think JFK is in a much better place than it was. I think there's stability amongst the ranks of the administration and the educators alike. But I just want to publicly thank them. I don't know what camera's looking. Thank you. I might thank you today, I'm not going to get emotional again, so that's not going to happen again. But they mean a lot to me. I also want to thank the Enfield Fire Department, Enfield Police Department, EMTs, our emergency response personnel that have just been there to help JFK be prepared to face any crisis that we could have possibly faced, just that larger family of Enfield departments and personnel that just make the JFK safe or create an environment of safety, excuse me, and also preparedness. So I want to thank them publicly as well. And I know I'm forgetting somebody, my family, my mom, for raising me correctly. I look forward to the work ahead and I look forward to meeting the larger Enfield family and serving them as I have JFK for the last six years and beyond. So thank you so much for your time and believing in me.
Thank you, Dr. Berrios. Okay, up next is audiences. Oh, okay, all right. Okay, so audiences. All speakers must identify themselves by full legal name and their relationship to the district. Four minutes will be allotted to each speaker. And it's any resident or taxpayer of Enfield, employee of the board or a stakeholder in our school system may address the board here. So first on the list is Christina Lang. I'm sorry if I messed it up.
Hello, I'm Chris Lang. I'm here as an individual resident at 90 South Road, Enfield, and also representing Showing Up for Racial Justice, the SURGE Enfield Chapter, which you probably know as a national group as well. First of all, I was really pleased to be at the meet and greet and I'm looking forward to seeing how well that works. Before I start my short presentation, my three-and-a-half-minute presentation, I do want to ask regarding the training of the armed guards, whether or not de-escalation training with school staff and among themselves has been prioritized. That's just a question, not relevant directly to my presentation. Now, I'm here with packets that you are probably just receiving. And I'm sorry, they look large, but basically the following, the first document, which is a staple three-pager, is the essential thing. And the other ones are just drawn information from that. So the last one in the packet is just a page about Showing Up for Racial Justice, who we are. That's all that is. But you will refer to that later if you want to. When we talk about the potential worries about litigation, there is a story in there that you should read and look into yourself from Pawtucket, Rhode Island. That may have a lot of relevance. But I'm not going to read it to you, it's there, okay? Well, here's the concern. Arresting public school students is a policy choice. I'm not talking about or referring to incidents that are legitimate issues, such as we've been seeing tonight, hearing about training for tonight in terms of felonious or criminal behavior. I want to find out how we explain how other school systems with more students had a lower arrest rate than Enfield in 2022, '23, going to give you a brief explanation of how we think that and why we know that. When you have questions like this, you go for answers and we have tried to do so. The first place was EdSite, the state portal. What did we learn, a real eyeful? We learned that Enfield suspension rates are among the highest in Connecticut. Number two or number three. FOIA's to the state told us of a trend in a couple of years. So it's not just one year. I'm talking about the year prior to COVID and after, 2019 and '20 is one of them and 2022, '23 is the other one. Black students made up 6.8% of the student population but accounted for 21.6% of arrests. Similarly, we learned in 2022, '23 that Hispanic students comprised 21.6% of enrollments, yet made up 36% of arrests. So it will lead to a question that we tried to get answers with a FOIA. We also led in arresting middle school students. That's sad. We're a state leader there, top three. Basically, we decided to get answers, so we started with FOIA's. The school district did not have it, suggested we go to the Enfield Police Department. So we FOIA'd there. They did not have anything to give us. And then we went to the town, to the Human Resources Department, and FOIA'd there. And they didn't have any data. What we were looking for were details, disaggregated information about ethnicity of the arrests we were looking at, where the middle school arrests, 42 kids in high school and middle school were arrested one year. We wanted to know a little bit about who are they, not by name. But that wasn't available, three different FOIA requests in May and June of this year. What does that tell us? It tells us that statewide, the school-based arrests have been declining, but Enfield is bucking a trend. So what does that mean? Can it mean that we are criminalizing adolescent behavior? I hope not, but we don't have data that we're trying to get. We need data and you're not collecting it.
Christina, I'm sorry to interrupt. You already passed four minutes. Can you just work on wrapping it up really quick?
I can wrap it, I'm so sorry. I didn't know I did that so fast. All right. Okay, we have to pay attention to that demographic data for another reason. You're a Tier Four town. It's a really important thing. And finally and lastly, look at the litigation information in Rhode Island. Has to do with disparate treatment. The judge there thought it was important enough to allow the ACLU, who was handling the lawsuit and still handling it, to do discovery. That means getting data, which you need in order to evaluate your programs to be sure you're not getting in trouble like that. Don't mean to be a downer, I'm happy we have our armed guards will be in there for doing good things, but this is a trend we don't want to see going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right, Maureen Griffin?
Hello, Happy New Year. Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road, parent. From what Chief Fox said, it sounds like if we're going to have the program, it's a decent one. Questions about that? Track off of that, we need Board of Admin oversight of trends. We should be tracking racial, cultural data about interactions, where they have to step in or where they decide where they are necessary, you know, without the front-loaded requests. Not to point fingers, but to see if there's any trends that need policy adjustment. Question would be, how are we protecting the confidentiality of students, especially ones with IEPs and 504s with these interactions? And I know restraint paperwork goes home to parents whenever a child needs to be restrained. There should be some form, some way for parents to know if there's been a direct interaction, even if it does not go to the level of restraint and that they know. Not that my kid was talked to, but if they had to step in, if something was getting out of control. Okay, that's all for that. Onto this year. It's going to be a tough one. I believe that everyone in that building, all those buildings, are going to give it their all to make do with the salad that's been served up by the bunch of votes. I ask that people remember it's not the teacher's fault. It's not admin's fault. Remember where it came from. Trust that they're doing the best they can, but have the respect for the kids to not try and put lipstick on it. Be honest with them, especially as you go up in the upper grades. They've lost a lot. They've lost eagle block. They've lost, which, yes, they have study halls, cool, they can do homework, but that's not eagle block. They don't have a time where they can meet with their instructor and get directed help. They can't meet with classmates who are tutoring them. It's just you happen to have a study hall. That's a big loss. And so now they have to wait for after-school and see if a teacher can stay with them. That's a big ask of the staff, who is now handling picking up extra security items, you know, monitoring kids in the hall more than they had to before because there's less adults in the buildings. It's a big ask of the staff, especially after everything that all the vilification that they've suffered over the past few years and most especially this past spring, when they said if you cut the budget, there's going to be serious impacts. And everybody was like, oh, you're just saying that just because you'd like to have a big union? BS, there's big impacts. No late buses, it's not equitable. If a kid has to be home to get their younger sibling off the bus, oh, well, you're SOL. If they have a job, if they do sports, even if the staff is willing to stay, the child can't. Or even if they can't get home other than walking across town. They have lost things. They've lost courses, they have lost, clubs, they have lost, many things. They've lost a whole lot of support staff, BTs, lot less adults in the room. Don't BS them. Be upfront with them. Expect that they are going to be frustrated and angry and don't treat them like they are inappropriately frustrated and angry. Kids have had their four years tracked out, what they wanted to do, and for some of them, it's out the window. Big loss. Give the thanks where they belong, the thanks for the losses. But give the credit for getting through this year to those in the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay, so that's the end of public... Okay, so that's the end of public comment. All right. Oh, yeah, come, that's fine. You could come on up. No worries. So just give me your name and address. I can write it down here.
Thank you. My name is Crystal Agvent, 11 Lori Drive. So the main reason I'm here today is because my son was a Enfield private school, St. Martha's. And when they closed, he went public. And Enfield's great. It's a huge town. I appreciate everybody. I see you all. This is really an amazing situation to be a part of. But he's at EHS High School. I had a few opportunities to do a drop off and a pickup. And it's a big safety issue. I work at St. Francis Hospital for 21 years. I travel into an inner city, and I deal with a lot of traffic. And that intersection in front of that high school is troubling to me. When I, every time I go, I sit there. And I'm like, if it's not me, it's going to be a young kid who gets into a big problem there. And I'm happy to hear that maybe when these four other SROs or SSOs become part of our program, that there's potential to have a crossing guard or somebody out there directing the traffic. Because it's bad. Just button it out there because it's our kids, it's our parents, it's everybody. And it's a bad intersection. And I know it's a state road, and there would never be a light, but somebody's going to get in a big pickle there. So with that being said, I just wanted to put that out there. So hopefully, I don't know how to follow this production, but hopefully I can stay in tune to when those four SROs come into play and if that could be a topic at that time. Because I know it's not a good topic now. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you. How do I follow? How do I follow?
Oh, you can go on ETV. We're on ETV on YouTube.
On the YouTube.
Second and Fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, Second and Fourth Tuesdays. Yep, okay. All right. Board member comments. Who would like to go first? Sure, Mr. Ryder.
Okay, so to our students, I know that summer seemed like it was going to be so super long back on June 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th. But this Thursday, I will be the first, at least of the eight of us here this evening, to welcome you all back. So welcome to all of our students. I also want to welcome back all of our staff, and I want to thank all of our staff that are here with us. One parallel we can draw to the amount of work that we're putting on our classroom teachers and our staff in our building is just to look at our directors. We used to have 10 Directors of Education in different areas, be it math and science, et cetera. We now have four. So those four people are now doing the job of two and a half people. And that's how I feel it's going to be for almost all of our classroom teachers. I DJed Field Day for almost all of our schools within a two-week period towards the end of the school year. And this is anecdotal, but in every classroom, when they would come out for their Field Day activities, there was the classroom teacher. There was the 17 to 22 students. And there was also like two or three other adults in every classroom, because some of the kids had paras and some of the kids had, you know, a volunteer helping them out. But it wasn't a parent volunteer that signed up to help out with Field Day. They were already out in the field with me, listening to the music, waiting for the kids to rotate stations. So when you saw, say, 20 students and three or four adults, that's like a one to five ratio. And I need people to know and to understand, to Mr. Longi's point about there being a few bumps in the road early on, there could be bumps in the road this whole school year when the amount of adults in Classroom 17 at X Building, who used to have a teacher and two or three other adults there helping him or her, will have, you know, hopefully at least one adult, but there won't be as much help. And I just, I want to thank all of our staff because they're all going to be doing at least the job of themselves and one and a half other people. I also want to make sure to ask all of our principals, our administrators that do the weekly email blast to their families to make sure that the Board of Ed has copied on all those emails. I personally, as everybody knows by now, I use those emails, and I put them on enfieldpto.com. So we have one website for our district where you can go and just tab over from one school to the next. We have everything all in one place. Our Enfield Public Schools website is becoming more and more user-friendly. I can see the changes happening. But that's something that we've been doing at Enfield PTO for seven school years. We're proud of that. So please make sure that we are CC'd on your communications so that way we can have the links so we know what's going on in our buildings. We all liaise for different buildings. So we use it, obviously each of us use it individually for that, but I specifically use it to make sure that we have another avenue, just another chance, another channel to communicate with our families. Not every parent is on Facebook or Instagram, or some pick one or the other, but everybody can go to a dot com on their phone or iPad. And that's why enfieldpto.com has a lot of traffic. Hot lunch menus, school bus routes, all that stuff. Right now, I'm presently updating each individual school page. Most of them are done. The few that aren't will be done tomorrow because, as we know, school starts on Thursday. So that's just a little plug for us to keep the nine of us in the loop because we try to help brag about each of you, each of our buildings, each of our students, and each of the great things our admins are doing for our kids, our students. There's also a new application that all parents or caregivers and students with phones can download called ParentSquare. So ParentSquare is going to be a new app that will eventually, though not right away, replace robocalls. It'll work in conjunction with robocalls for a while. It'll work in conjunction with tweets, et cetera. But eventually, everybody's going to need the ParentSquare app. So ParentSquare will be used for all weather alerts, emergency updates, announcements of school closings. So if there's a snow day coming up, which will happen sooner than we think, all that stuff will be going through ParentSquare. So there's a link to ParentSquare on each individual page of enfieldpto.com as well as on enfieldschools, plural, enfieldschools.org. So make sure everybody downloads the new ParentSquare app. And I think that's all I had for general communications for now. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Who'd like to go next? Anybody? Ms. Akry?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome back our teachers, the staff, our students, administrators, the central office administrators, and our new superintendent, Mr. Macchio, to the 24, 25 school year. I hope you all had a restful and relaxing summer. As a present board member representing the Enfield School District, I am hopeful that we will be able to rebuild our district over time, even though we may face a few challenges along the way. I am still, though, looking forward to hearing the success stories and the accomplishments of our students as they embark on the new reading series. I'm also looking forward to attending the special events and the concerts at all our different schools that demonstrate our students' abilities and their intellect, their talents, and their creativity. That's still going to be there. Let us not focus on the programs that we have lost, but let's focus on how and when we can and how we will do our best with the resources and the curriculum that we have at the present. Good luck to all and have a successful and productive school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akry. Who'd like to go next? All right.
I can't believe it's the first meeting of the school year. It's been a really busy summer. I think many people have been paying attention. We have been meeting all summer with getting new leadership, budget meetings. So in some ways, I feel like it's not the first meeting. We just have like been meeting. So I do want to begin my remarks by welcoming and thanking our new superintendent, Mr. Macchio. He isn't here tonight since he doesn't officially start with us until September 30th, correct? But I want to share my hopes for his leadership and my gratitude for how he's already stepped up and stepped in. Andy, I also want to thank you for guiding us during this incredibly challenging transition. You and the central office team have really stepped up, and I appreciate that. I think it's really important that I take a moment to thank our staff. You have all been impacted by the cuts and the changes. School community has been dismantled and shaken up. I want to thank the new teaching teams working hard and for being open to building new relationships with new colleagues. Thank you to the leadership who continue to put students first while trying to make the best of the little that remains. I'm hopeful for the school year. I believe in our leadership. I believe in our staff. I believe in our students and our families. But as a mom, I'm really concerned. I'm encouraging everybody who is impacted to share your feedback in helpful ways. I'm encouraging you to share your feedback with staff, with admin, and with us, and most importantly, share it with the town council proactively. Don't just wait to the budget season. Share your stories, share your solutions and things that work. Help us do better to rebuild with your considerations in mind. I do want to open the school year by being clear on some of my top priorities and hopes for new leadership with updates and considerations. My first, which is timely for tonight, is around school security. I thank the Enfield Police Department for the meet and greet that they hosted and the board presentation. Their partnership is integral to our success. But the concerns that I have are more about the behavioral and mental health concerns inside of our schools. I'm incredibly anxious about the lack of prevention and intervention staff and lots of men with guns. Between the SROs and the armed guards, there'll be four total at the high school and four at the middle school. It seems excessive to me. I wonder if this is really meeting the needs of our students. I wonder if this tightened security model is actually keeping us safer or the most effective use of our resources, especially when we have buildings that have no double entries, no locking doors from the inside, or other basic physical safety measures. I'm also asking that Enfield Public Schools keep detailed records of the behavioral data that we will be collecting. As a Board of Ed, we receive monthly discipline data along with 911 calls. What will the impact of this new security model be on our discipline and crisis data? Who is impacted by these changes? So currently, the data that we get is non-identifiable. I think it would be helpful to have data on students with IEPs, race, grade level, gender of students. I raise concerns as a parent about our concerning discipline trends for students with disabilities and students of color. Students should not suffer because of a mayor's pet project or a lack of funding for adequate staffing and supports for students. This is not the kids' fault. I'm hoping that the town council is carefully monitoring the budget of this security program and publicly reporting on the actuals. We've already made modifications, making them full-time positions, adding a captain to supervise the guards, and covering with EPD overtime staffing. I'm also under the impression that Enfield Public Schools is covering some positions as well. I think it's important that we are clear with the public the cost of this program. My second security question, which came up a little bit earlier and by one of our speakers, is school zone signage and safety support during arrival and dismissal, especially at Enfield High and Enfield Street School. Route 5 is deadly. There was an accident here last week, right in front, right where all of the traffic is. We now have a sign in front of Enfield Street School that encourages 45 miles per hour all the time. There's actual no signage about a school zone. There's a crosswalk sign a little bit further down, references nothing about a school. Unfortunately, school zone signage isn't much better across town. I heard from the chief that the SROs are not going to be supporting traffic, and maybe once we're fully staffed, that's a consideration. I'm going to ask our joint security committee to consider if there's a patrol officer on duty, if there's a way to do some extra staffing, to have 10 minutes at the high school to let buses and parents and students safely leave. I think it would matter. Prevention matters. Investing in prevention actually saves your budget, and it saves lives. Part of safety is the upkeeping grounds of our buildings. I saw our mayor recently posted about the Wallop School Park. I appreciate his attention to the down and dying trees, emergency access gate, and nets for the nearly new basketball courts. So my wonder is if he's driven by a parkman, a school in District 1. How decisions are being made and how funds are being spent is concerning. A school and playground where Monday through Friday over 250 resident students play is consistently overlooked. Yet a park tucked into one neighborhood is given priority treatment. Maybe we need to consider busing our kids to Wallop School Park for recess. What happened to the field and park study? What happened to our school modernization plan? And when will our school buildings and grounds become a priority? The next topic I have is our budget. We had an uncomfortable and unclear meeting on August 13th to discuss the audit and end-of-year closeout. I don't believe a forensic, which I'm still not sure if we have a clear definition on, will unearth any major stones. I do believe that we will find ways that the town can improve processes and reporting. I think we can all agree increased communication about our budget is important. But I also think that we need to have an honest conversation about our community's investment in education. I believe that we're in this situation because we have always been underfunded. And the rainy day fund of COVID, which was a blessing and a curse, is gone. These funds, these temporary funds, allowed our district to finally provide some of the structures, staffing, and supports that we need. But unfortunately, the town council decided to not fund those. We have now turned the clocks back, and it seems as if they expect that the needs have just gone away, refuse to acknowledge the proven success of the supports that we added during COVID with those additional resources. I'm asking that we give budget updates, but we also give program, support, and student updates. This isn't just dollar signs, it's kids' futures. My next main concern is our structures of support for our staff. We need to care for those who remain. Again, I thank you. What is our intentional structure of support for them? How are we ensuring that they feel successful and supported? The reality is that the weight will be heavier. We have staff who have moved buildings, who have moved grade levels, who have moved content areas, and their certification use. This is incredibly hard. They need to know how appreciated they are, and they need to be part of our rebuilding plan. I know too many amazing staff who have sacrificed a ton for this district, and their expertise, skill, and craft could really help shape structures that support them and our students. This leads me to my last direct hope for our new school year and new leadership. Dedication to engaging our students, families, and staff in rebuilding our future. We need thoughtful ways to engage those with influence and those impacted by decisions in this process. I'm not asking for surveys or meet and greets. I'm asking for proactive engagement, real opportunities to be part of the decision-making process. If you need some ideas of what this could look like, ask Jaclyn Valley. She does a comprehensive reflection and action planning every year that engages everybody in the decision-making of the programming at STOW. This community is filled with people who care about Enfield Public Schools' future. We need everybody now more than ever. I also want to share my gratitude to our community. There are so many beautiful things happening that we should be talking about. The food shelf and ERFC helping get school supplies to our kids, the concert series happening outside our window, the farmer's market here on Sundays, the Rock the Vote event that happened last Saturday. So much is possible when we work together. So thank you to everybody involved in making sure back-to-school happens and is a success. Central Office, Smith Bus, our community partners, staff, families, and most importantly, students. I wish you all nothing but the best for the 24, 25 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Figgott. Dr. Kalman?
Thank you. I guess I'm really concerned about the impact that the budget problem, the challenge, is going to have on the mental health of our kids. I've mentioned this ad nauseam, I know. But I think it's going to be really, it's going to be a really, really challenging year. year. And we have to, we have to, we keep circling this issue again and again. What are we going to do about mental health? And I think in terms of finding resources within the school system for addressing this problem, I think that's a fool's errand. So we have to look for other resources. We need to reach kids where they are, and they spend most of their waking hours in school. So that's where we have to really meet them. I guess I've come full circle on this issue. I am a strong believer in school-based health centers, and Jean and I have both worked on this issue as a means of addressing mental health issues as well as other health-related issues. But logistical problems have arisen. We worked with the Connecticut Association for School-Based Health Centers, and we had ongoing communications, and they said there is money available for communities like Enfield for developing school-based health centers. Matter of fact, not for just one school, but they identified a number of schools. And yet, those funds never seem to be forthcoming, and we've been beating our heads against the wall for literally months and months, and nothing is happening. And yet, it's needed. Maybe we can't get a school-based health center running somewhere in Enfield, but at least perhaps we can get a mental health-based school system in operation. According to the Mental Health Blueprint for Children in Connecticut, this is a joint statement of the Connecticut Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Connecticut Chapter of the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, this is a quote, "Of those children who receive any mental health services in Connecticut, 70% to 80% receive that care in a school setting." And what does Enfield have? We have nothing. So we need to continue to advocate for a school-based mental health center in at least one of our schools to start with. And we need to strike while the iron is hot. We've got people running for the state legislature. We've got to talk to them about the urgent need for bringing in resources. Hold their feet to the fire and really make sure that they understand the urgency of investing, finding resources in the state to invest in school-based mental health centers. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman.
I was thankful for the invitation to attend the Enfield Public Schools Staff Convocation yesterday. It was a wonderful opportunity to welcome, to recognize, and to celebrate all of the new as well as the returning staff members. And to honor Ms. Sherri Winans, the Enfield Public Schools 2425 Teacher of the Year, as well as Support Staff Member of the Year, Mr. Jonathan LeBlanc. As we stand on the threshold of a new year, may we all, with great anticipation and excitement, fix our eyes on the opportunities for growth and for learning that lie before us. As Mrs. Winans said in her remarks yesterday, "Life is the cup. We get to choose how to fill it." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuschman. Go ahead, Ms. LeBlanc.
Okay, just a couple thoughts tonight. To Ms. Lang, I will be looking into your packet, and I think that data is going to be extremely important with less bodies in our school buildings this year. I feel that we have lots of broken pieces in this town because I feel that there should be more of a partnership when it comes to stuff like this with our town's social services department, and I don't see that. I am super appreciative that Chairwoman Riley has been asked to sit on a committee to represent the Board of Ed on that committee for us, but I just don't see a partnership like the last, since Jean left, really. There's really a disconnect between our Board of Ed and this is the work that Dr. Jerry and Ms. Acre have picked up and tried to do. So I wanted to mention that. There's just, it's a real weak spot, right? There's no collaboration, data, cohesiveness. To Ms. Griffin's point, now that we have, we have study halls with less staff, getting extra help and joining clubs just became less equitable because staying after school requires a ride. That's something to stick about, think about. To the traffic issue at JFK, and I know we are very focused on the light, and after the recent accident is very dangerous, but consistently, and I mean consistently, students and parents are driving through the bus lights consistently, especially on half-days. And there is a lot of walking traffic because you have students leaving the school, going in between buses, and it's just a consistent thing. And I wish there was a day, like if we could devote September to just ticketing them, I bet you it'll come to a quick stop because this is, this is about safety. It's not about beating the buses out of there. And we have obviously so many buses there because like we do for JFK. We don't see this with JFK because of the setup, but something needs to be done, and that's asking a lot because we have less bodies for the same amount of students, if not more. But that's definitely, I don't know, does that fall in the EPD? Where does this fall? But if the police are there, they don't do it, obviously, but the police aren't there, and it is consistent. Question about insurance through the chair to Mr. Longi or to the chair, really? I appreciate you continually asking about having a joint insurance meeting, and I didn't know if it's possible to, with our claim fund balance, to be able to see like the list of withdrawals or types of transfers and where those transfers might be going. As we spoke about in leadership, the money that's going in there is our employees' money too, and we have to be responsible with that. A couple more things. Mr. Longi, I know we spoke about a class matrix through the chair to Mr. Longi. Is that something we could get about how big the classes are?
We still have quite a few students who came in that they're in the enrollment process.
Sure.
We have almost 20 students that have come in the past week.
Okay.
That were still, I want to get you the most finalized numbers that I can get you. So if you could give me till next week, and then I'll have definitive numbers. And depending on where some of those numbers lie, I may need to come back to the board and talk about a few of our class sizes, but I do not want to do that until I know for sure what we have.
So why don't we plan for the September 24th meeting so that we have a good idea?
I'm hoping to get numbers to you in an email, to be honest with you, by next week, an actual Excel sheet, so you know by grade.
Yeah.
Where we are, at least at the elementary level. High school's a little bit tougher to see.
Yeah.
But elementary, for sure, I can get you.
Okay. As far as the bus staffing goes, how are we looking with staffing? Because we had a lot of issues last year, especially with our sports teams, making sure that our events were staffed.
We're still short, but it's like a double-edged sword. The fact that we're not offering middle school sports has freed up certainly the afternoon runs, but we're still short, and they are working through them. Is that correct, Kath?
Yeah.
Yes. So we're seeing some staffing concerns across the board again.
Okay. I just want to clarify, now that the dust has settled, just a few questions. Were any AP classes cut?
Originally, no. We did have a late resignation last week that I'm not sure if it impacted the AP business course or not.
No.
It did not, so then no.
Okay, perfect.
A couple may not be running due to low enrollment, like low interest, but everything is still being offered.
If I could find out a list, or maybe I could ask, curriculum can ask a list of those classes that had low enrollment, and because what has happened in the past is when we've had low enrollment, we stopped offering them altogether, so.
We try to keep them on the books.
Right.
And not take them out of the program of study and offer them, but after multiple years sometimes, and sometimes one will run one year and another one will run the next year.
Right. I know you gave us the list of, you said we needed 10 paras. What about behavior texts? Are those, how are we doing on the?
Behavioral texts, we're looking good.
We're looking good, okay. Can a student take an additional elective rather than have a study hall? Like, can they opt out of study hall for a class?
If there's room.
Okay, I asked for the matrix. You answered my question about the full-time teachers. You were right on point. I think that it's really important that we get a real good baseline this year for these horrific cuts because we are coming off, I'm excited to see the 2023, 2024 school year because we still have the instructional coaches and the additional supports, and I think those should be our baselines, what a school district can perform with these additional supports. And then this is really going to give us a baseline on what this has done to our district. We won't see it, we're not going to even know next year, but it's really important, and it's really honest, we have to be really honest with the community, even if it's bad news, that this is exactly what's happening in our school district.
Can I jump in right there?
Sure.
So the scores were embargoed, but Ms. Middleton was able to get a general overview of the past three years, and what we were doing was working.
Yes.
There's no question. So scores were going up. So just in general, the past three years, especially last year, all of our grades, 3 through 8 and 11, that we keep track of, the combined scores for math, ELA, and science have increased year over year. So it was working. We were moving. We lessen the gap between Enfield and the state in ELA math during this time. Our science gap, we were actually negative 1.1 compared to the state, and that was in three years ago, and just recently, we're now plus 1 and 1/2. So that doesn't seem like a huge increment, but that's a large growth.
It is.
For something like that.
Growth.
So we're now above the state, and that was all of the supports. There's no magic, there's nothing magic about this. This is a tremendous amount of supports, a tremendous amount of one-on-one individual attention, and staffing. That's what it is. So I do not have a crystal ball, but I probably will be the last person to be able to give positive reports this year. I don't know what next year is going to look like. I can't imagine that we're going to see that trend, but maybe I'll be shocked. Who knows? Maybe, maybe we had enough supports that we'll get a couple of years out of it. I don't know. But as a board, I think it's important that you do realize that the effort you put into offering incredible supports, and Ms. Pickett, you're 100% right, that the infusion of the COVID money, quote-unquote, the COVID money, really was the funding that we really needed all along to really provide for the needs of this district. I just think if you really dig into the needs that we have, sorry, I don't mean to go on a soapbox, but Ms. LeBlanc, you brought it up, was exactly what we needed, and that's why we started seeing movement. It's that simple. So, Ms. LeBlanc, I'm with you. I think it's going to be interesting to see what happens, but we'll have to wait next year at this time to see what happens.
Okay. And my last two questions or thoughts is, I'd love to hear the loss of the Career Center, how that is impacting kids at the high school. We might not have that answer right now, but that's something I'd want to know. And I know our dropout rate has been a lot lower, and I'm concerned about our dropout rates increasing. So I'll be asking you probably for a trend in our dropout rates, so I wanted to give you that heads up this evening. Okay, doki. So we're always talking about how we're resetting this district. It's a rebuild, it's a rebuild. But one of the things that's super important is I think that we all have to rebuild right from the top down. We all have to self-reflect and say, just because we were doing it this way, we can no longer do it this way. I think somebody, a wise person, said last evening, "We have been living in survival mode, and it's time to come out of survival mode and actually having a reset." So first, I wanted to take a moment to congratulate Dr. Barrios on his appointment as HR Director. Dr. Barrios, I appreciate your perseverance for this district. I cannot wait to see how your innovative ideas, your previous leadership role in one of our biggest buildings during COVID and construction, and your demeanor will have direct positive impacts in our district. Your attention to detail and willingness to learn, not only from constituents, but the learning and research you pursue on your own, will play such an important role as our new HR Director. So again, congratulations. And this is something I've been thinking about all summer, especially since the budget Okay, as a society and as a district, we put so much pressure on our teachers. This year, our teachers need central office and building admin support more than ever. Teachers are facing larger class sizes, less support staff. Teaching collaborations have been separated due to the shifting to different buildings, losing so much staff, having new building principals, and having completely new roles due to having a special ed certification. The only questions that we should be asking of our teachers is, how are you doing? How are you feeling? And how can I help you? The future of our world is in the teachers' classrooms. Bill Gates said, "Students deserve great teachers, and teachers deserve the support they need to become great." We invest in students by investing in our teachers, investing not only monetarily but in their concerns, their struggles, their need for support. Schools are influenced more by their informal culture than by their mission statement, policies, and procedures. Strong supportive relationships and a positive team mentality are what make schools truly exceptional. Since the classroom teacher is more important to the success of the programs, curriculum, or technology, that means morale is more important. Don't give a lecture to someone who needs a hug. Make staff morale a priority this year. Give them a voice for input. Trust them as professionals. Treat everyone as individuals. Respect their time and show them you care on a personal and professional level while celebrating and appreciating them. Admins, pop into the classroom to check in with your teachers and ask not only about their students, ask them how they are doing. It will mean everything to them. Justine Tartt said, "For educators, the more they know about who they teach, the more effective they will be with what they teach. Taking time to get to know their students isn't fluff time, it's academic time." Thank you to our teachers that realize how important that is. This proves the same for our building admin and our central office staff. Get to know our teachers. In today's society, people ask, why would anyone want to become a teacher? Society should be reminded that it's worth it. Every job has its ups and downs, but not every job can change a life. Dwight Eisenhower said, "Teachers need our active support and encouragement. They are doing the most necessary and exacting jobs in the land. They are developing our most precious national resource, our children and our future citizens." Teaching is the profession that teaches all the other professions. If we teach today's students as we taught yesterday's, we'd rob them of tomorrow's. Sometimes, the greatest PD is the teacher down the hall. Our instructional coaches were being sought out for thoughts, brainstorming, and collaborations on lessons and strategies. Unfortunately, we had to cut those positions. We have amazing teachers in our buildings who want to help other teachers succeed. There have been so many lies, anger, and deflection around Enfield Public Schools and the town of Enfield. Let me take a second to remind you how important the teachers are in this district and why education should be valued. Teachers set a baseline, not only for learning, but kindness and acceptance. Now, I'm going to say teachers, and I've said teachers a lot, but this also includes BT's paras, support staff in our schools. We need a reminder of what public schools do on a daily basis that we take for granted, and we let noise and pet projects and anger and deflection take over what's actually happening in our schools. The art of teaching special education is the art of assisting discovery while embracing uniqueness. Working with special needs students gives you the opportunity to impact the lives of children who have disabilities, learning disorders, and developmental delays. Not only are you making an impact in the lives of students by giving them tools and resources to learn according to their learning style, it helps every child, no matter their differences, to do the best and feel empowered. Teaching language arts is about not only imparting language, but also sharing culture and human connections. It helps students develop skills that are useful in many areas of life. Communication by helping students express and understand their feelings, they solve problems, and develop interpersonal relationships. Language arts also helps students learn how to receive and process information and communicate in effective ways. It helps with critical thinking. ELA helps students think more critically and abstractly about information. This type of thinking, combined with communication skills, teaches valuable life lessons. Teaching math is not just teaching math, it's inspiring a mindset to solve problems. Math helps strengthen reasoning skills and critical thinking. It helps us think analytically about the world and reason logically. The same steps you take to understand a problem, identify the knows and unknowns, and then solve it, can be applied to other areas of your life. To teach science is to teach students to question, experiment, and wonder. Science education gives the students the opportunity to gain a better knowledge of how and why things function. Science can teach children about the world that surrounds them, everything from human anatomy to techniques of interpretation, and science can reveal the mechanisms and the reasons for complicated systems. Art is not what you see, but what you make another see. Edgar Degas. Teaching through the arts can present difficult concepts visually, making them more easy to understand. Art instruction helps children with development of motor skills, language skills, social skills, decision-making, risk-taking, and inventiveness. Art helps kids develop a sense of their own individuality, a sense of self-respect and appreciation for others' work. Music education opens the door that help children pass from school into the world around them, a world of work, culture, intellectual activity, and human involvement. Gerald Ford. Music improves cognitive and noncognitive skills, and music activates both the left brain, the left and right brain at the same time, and that activation of both hemispheres can maximize learning and improve memory. Musical training develops the region of the brain responsible for verbal memory, the recall and retention of spoken words, which serves as a foundation for retaining information in all academic subjects. Social studies helps educate and prepare future leaders by helping students understand their own backgrounds, the values and diverse backgrounds and experience of Americans, and the wide variety of cultures and cultures. the wide variety of cultures and customs of people around the world and other periods in history. Social studies helps students understand history, cultural awareness, and civic engagement. Early childhood education is important because it helps children develop skills that can last a lifetime, including social and emotional skills, cognitive development, and resilience. Early childhood experiences from birth to eight affect the development of the brain's architecture, which provides a foundation for all future learning and health. Studies have shown that schools with high-quality school support staff members tend to have higher student achievement reach, which we just learned. This is because these professionals create a supportive academic environment where students feel safe and comfortable learning. Having a support system in place can help students cope with stress, anxiety, and other emotional challenges. School social workers seek to identify and meet the needs of students who may be struggling academically, socially, or at home. In doing so, these professionals help create a more equitable educational experience. PE provides cognitive content and instruction designed to develop motor skills, knowledge, and behaviors. Our lunch staff, our kids' interactions with the school lunch staff is an important part of their day. Our school lunch staff greets everyone who comes in, including teachers and administrators, and they build so many positive relationships with our students. School secretaries are our ultimate multitaskers. They can gather attendance report, answer the phone, and answer a parent's question all at the same time. They actively listen to students, to teachers, and to principals. School nurses are in a unique position to provide direct care and build connections with students. A strong and positive district culture shows a clear sense of direction and share accountability to advance and a vision for success. This shapes how teachers and leaders do their jobs. This is built on mutual respect and trust of our teachers, which are the foundation of learning communities. It is so important to remember what we're doing in our public schools. We are not a liability. We are not a budget line item where people can just go ahead and say what they think we need without knowing and listening to the people in our district about what we need. As we come back to school this Enfield school year, it's going to be difficult. I will be there every step of the way to support you. In case no one has told you today, you are a great teacher. Keep on being awesome. Erin Bardal said, "Your heart is slightly bigger than the average human heart, but that's because you're a teacher." Happiness, cohesiveness, and support comes from the top down, not from the classrooms up. We are EPS. Now let's get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Astrogynitis.
Well said. Dana.
Thank you.
But that said, still doesn't resolve my conflict that I'm having between my mouth and my brain at the moment. You asked, "What is teaching?" It's a passion. It's a love affair with kids and what you can do with the kids. And it's just a passionate thing to do. I would like to welcome the teachers, the students, back to school. I hope you have a good year, both academically, socially, sports-wise. I'd like to welcome back the teachers, the administrators, and I'm sure you'll do what you do best, and that's teach like there's no tomorrow. As for Dr. Barrios, I'd like to congratulate him for getting his new position. Unfortunately, it's at a great loss to the kids and the staff at JFK. They're going to miss you for your leadership and the helping hand that you always gave to members of the student body. When Crystal came up and brought up the topic that we've talked about a number of times, about the top of the hill at Enfield High School, I still go back to some of the things that I said last year. As far as the exit from the building at the end of the day, I don't know exactly how many buses go down the hill and out where the athletic fields are. I also know you still have that road behind where the tech classes are held, that one street where it's blocked off, and you're only supposed to use it as an emergency. This seems like it's getting to be an emergency situation, and I really can't understand why that gate can't be open for 10 minutes in the morning and 10 minutes in the afternoon to let buses and kids come in and to exit. I think when it, those people going out that way could then go up to Enfield Street and take a right-hand turn, and off they go. And as far as going up the hill, I would say only buses and cars can take a right-hand turn for at least a 10 or 15-minute time period. No left-hand turns, which I think there lies the major problem. And anybody that has been taking left-hand turns, let them go down the hill and out the other way. So I think there are ways of rectifying that problem, and I hope we do. Okay, now for the argument going on in my head. As a parent, as a former teacher, as a Board of Ed member in the past and now, and for the staff and law enforcement officers in our building, and for the safety of our kids. To insinuate that there's bias and racial overtones in our schools, I personally find insulting to the school system and the people of Enfield. Now, I know I'm not speaking for everybody in town, but I know it's for a large portion of the people in town. This whole thing about the arrest records, you listen day in and day out how politics on the national level saying crime is down in this country. I don't believe that at all. It's just that it's not being reported. Crime is up. As far as Enfield, as far as a middle school, the arrests being among 23, much larger than 23 of the larger state communities, once again, I think we're doing it to protect our kids, to protect our staff. I think in other schools, you can't tell me it's safer to go to school in Bridgeport or Hartford or New Haven or Waterbury, and the list can go on and on in other communities. We're doing what we have to do for the safety of the kids, for the safety of the staff. I guess I'll just leave it there and let my mouth take a rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Astrogynitis. Okay, so I guess I'm just left. So with the buses and the light, we've talked about that at over half of the joint security meetings that we've had. It's a never-ending battle. We're obviously never going to give up. It's just going to be like Walter with the light, except I think we have to give up on the light part because that's just really not going to happen. It's Route 5. I've had people contact me about the speed limit signs, the new flashing signs that we got. It's a state road. They're in charge of the speed limit. That's still an uphill battle. So hopefully, you know, maybe with it being an election year, maybe those people who would like to get elected put a little pressure on the state and DOT to assist with getting proper speed school zone signs. That would be great. But we're not giving up. It's just, it's, we've been told no, and we just keep coming back, and we'll keep coming back until we can find a solution. But I'm definitely hopeful that when 1-1 rolls around and we have fully-staffed SSROs, that we can at least send one out there to take care of the traffic problem out there. Like many other people have said, I am looking forward to seeing data about our results and how we're doing. I envision, and we've talked about it before in leadership, you know, to have further discussions with the four directors, to see how things are going, get input from the principals, and with new leadership with Mr. Macio, and how fact-based and data-driven he seems to be, that we would have a good baseline, and we would be able to completely justify what our needs are when the next budget time rolls around, and pinpoint exactly how our money can be spent in the most effective ways. So I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Macio on that. And speaking of him, there was a great meet-and-greet session that we had the other day with the public and admins and parents. I'm sure he came away with a lot of more takeaways than what you've just given him now up here. I had some great conversations with people in the community. We've actually started to bring some of those ideas through leadership, trying to plan out the year ahead. So I'm looking forward to that. Congratulations to Dr. Barrios for his new role as HR Director. I wish him the best, even though I definitely will miss him very much over at JFK. He did a great job over there, and I always, as a parent over there, felt that he had the building quite under control, and fulfilling his mission statement over there was like diligence and respect and all the ones, I can't remember them all, but he definitely fulfilled that over there. And like Mr. Longi said, we already have the wheels in motion to find a permanent replacement for the principal spot, so stay tuned for updates on that process. There will probably be a request for parent and staff input as well, so keep your eyes out for that. I hope some of you got to see the joint meeting that we had with the town council regarding the budget, our status of the budget, and where they are with their requesting the RFP process and what they wanted to find the audit as. You can watch YouTube if you want to replay that meeting. It was on August 12. But most importantly, I want to welcome back all the students, the parents and staff for the '24-'25 school year. Thursday's going to be an exciting day for everybody. I know some people are nervous. Some are excited. Some are ready to rock and roll, and some are dreading that first day. I know I can't wave a magic wand and everything will be perfect, but I'd like to offer some words of encouragement and reassurance, and then some hopes for the year. Yesterday, I was able to attend the teacher convocation at Enfield High. For those of you who don't know, all the staff across the district comes together because we haven't done it since pre-COVID, so that was great to see everybody there. It's the first time I've ever been to one. It's kind of like a pep rally for the staff in a way. They go over the high-level professional development that they're going to go through in the next couple of days, and what's new, and they set the tone for the year. The Teacher of the Year and the Sports Staff of the Year, they get to speak, and the superintendent rallies the troops. And this year, we had interim Superintendent Longi rally the troops, and then even though it was the first day of staff in public schools, Mr. Macio came and helped rally the troops too. So I thought that was awesome of him. There were over 600 staff in the auditorium, and it was an eye-opening perspective of just how many people we have that make a difference in our kids' lives every day. I was taken aback, actually, when Mr. Longi asked for the teachers to stand that were here teaching in Enfield. And I think one of your groupings was 10 to 29 years, and it seemed like more than half of that auditorium stood up. And then he said over 29 years, and there were still people standing. I just really want to say thank you to those teachers in particular who have spent basically your entire career at Enfield Public Schools through everything that's changed, and not just this past year, and all the shuffling and all the bumping. You chose to stay. You couldn't have easily left this summer and gone to another district, but you decided to stay. I've heard a lot of stories over the summer of staff stepping up and really grabbing the bull by the horns to take on the challenge and build up those around them. And I just really wanted to say thank you. That shows some serious dedication, and you guys are amazing for that. So, students and parents, I think we have a great team here that wants to be here and is beyond obviously dedicated to the success of our kids. I know there's been a lot of moving parts and last-minute changes, but I'm hopeful if all of us collectively are patient, patient being the big, big one in all capital letters, respectful and supportive, I think that this will turn out to be a pretty good year. But going back to convocation, my small summer observation at work plays into the message given yesterday to the staff, and I wanted to build on that and show a real-world example of why it's important. So my eyes were opened alarmingly at work this summer. For the last few years, I have mentored a college intern during the summer, and it usually goes pretty well. It's uneventful. There's never any issues. They're ready to go. And a lot of them end up getting hired right after that. But this year, I was raised some red flags that I hope that we can have an impact on in the future. So in my experience this summer, and about probably 80% of my colleagues that also mentored an intern, it was kind of sad to see that they were really woefully unprepared for at least the corporate world. These were college students that are going into their senior year at their universities. They barely had any interpersonal skills to speak effectively with their mentors and the management. They did not compose professional emails and had no real concept of what professional standards like attendance and things like that were. They could, however, do the job when given a training sheet with all the directions on how to use the programs. However, once an issue arose, it was difficult for them to navigate around it. They were not engaged in why these processes were occurring or how it played into the career field that they were supposedly interested in. So yesterday, at convocation, it was mentioned in various ways that we need to teach our students on the skills and the tools to prepare them for the future, not just memorize and repeat back information for a test, which, don't get me wrong, has its place for certain things for sure, but to teach them how to be active learners and critical thinkers. This is imperative that we need to work towards this, because if we don't, they will be passed over for future jobs like some of them did. And their odds for success in the real world just won't be very high. I believe that using our vision of a graduate plan and consistently building towards this goal of a prepared student to go out and be part of the world is a great place to start and build upon. So my challenge for the staff is to please grow in your roles, challenge yourself, be open to making mistakes, but also be open to change and success. Please help teach our students the skill sets that they need to be able to access all stages of learning, and how to solve problems, and how to interact professionally with their staff and peers. Fill their mental toolkits to the brim, so to speak. I think if we focus on the how and the why, then the results in the tests, but more importantly, how a student's able to navigate successfully through a variety of problems and challenges will speak for themselves. So, parents and families, we need your help too, to support from home your students' learning. We've been working in leadership to hopefully have principals send out in their newsletters in the future, when school starts going, how parents can assist or volunteer in their schools this year, whether it's volunteering for PTO or offering to help a teacher with something in class. Just keep an eye out in the newsletters and on the PTO's Facebook pages, and looking in those backpack paychecks that come home. Please, this year is super important. Please fill out the nutrition forms for free and reduce lunch. I believe that the guidelines may have changed again slightly, so just please check out our website, print out the forms. Maybe you'll be eligible, maybe you won't be, but I would fill it out. Because with all these prices going up and the electric bills that are out of control, I do not want people to miss out on assistance if you qualify for it. So also, if you're able, like Mr. Ryder said, sign up for Parent Square. That replaces the Remind app. I did it last week for my two students. It was super easy. Everything was basically there. Once I put the code in, then I got my email. It took like 10 minutes to do it. And then Power School for Returning Students, I just did that yesterday. Took me two, three minutes maybe to redo my kids' information. So thank you, Dr. Wiley and her team, for working on the new update with the new Parent Square and working on the website and getting all the iPads ready to go. That's a massive undertaking, so thank you. So, now the most important part, why we're here, the students. I ask of you to show up, work hard, give your best, and respect each other. Every single one of you, almost all 5,000 of you, are special and are different from each other in your own unique ways, and that is where our strength lies. We can all learn something different from somebody else. So I challenge all of you, just simply say hello to someone that you've never said hello to before. Let's make all of our differences our strength, because we do all have one thing in common. We are all part of Enfield Public Schools, and it's time that we prove to ourselves and our community and the state just how awesome that we can be. So I wish you the best this year. We are definitely all rooting for you. All right. All right, Ms. Astrogynitis. I hope you feel better. All right, Ms. Genitis, I hope you feel better. Okay, so moving on to number 10. Unfinished business, there isn't any. New business, nothing yet. Board committee reports. Curriculum committee.
The next meeting is September 19th.
September 19th, okay. Finance and budget.
The next finance committee meeting will be on September 3rd. Usually, our meetings are at the beginning of the month, but we are waiting for the return of Mr. Kober, who was serving at a post for the National Guard. Mr. Kober would like to participate at the next finance meeting. So therefore, the meeting has been postponed until September 23rd. The Board of Ed, as was mentioned before by Mrs. Riley, did have a joint meeting with the Town Council on August 12th. And Mr. Longi gave an updated report of the school district's finances.
Thank you, Ms. McCrea. Policy committee.
Policy committee meets next on September 17th.
September 17th, you said? Okay, thank you. And leadership, we just met last week. We talked about a large order of things. And I'm expecting that we will probably meet sometime next week or the week after.
Maybe the week after.
Yeah, maybe the week after. So liaison reports. Joint Facilities Committee. I know we have a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, no, Thursday.
Yeah, sorry, Thursday.
We meet next, this Thursday at 6:00. And that's where our special guest will be, John Dag, who will be discussing the potential for or the details around and regarding a modernization plan for some of our elementary buildings.
Perfect. JFK Building Committee, we still -- that's still going? Or are we done now?
It is. It'll be done soon.
Okay. Joint Security, our next meeting is on September 9th. Yep.
I can double-check the date, but I believe so.
Yeah. Then Enfield Mental Health Committee.
There was a dinner for pediatric.
Sorry. There was a dinner for pediatric providers sponsored by the Enfield Kite and Enfield Head Start. That special dinner meeting was held on July 25th to discuss how pediatricians in the school district can work together and safeguard and promote the mental health and well-being of our Enfield students. And there were several pediatricians in attendance. Among the speakers, we had Mr. Andy Longi, who spoke about the dimensions of the mental health challenges in our school district and the district's response to them. The hope of the Mental Health Committee is that the dinner will open up ongoing communications between the medical community and the school district so that they will be able to confront the childhood mental health crisis as a team rather than as separate entities. Pediatric providers were also familiarized with mental health resources available in Enfield, including the Sparkler app, which provides a mechanism for greatly expanding the capacity to identify toddlers and young children at risk for mental health challenges so that they can be referred in a timely manner to resources available in the town. It is anticipated that such early intervention will have a positive long and short-term impact on the mental health status of our students. Mr. Longi, Dr. Callen, and I are looking at the calendar for the month of September to schedule our next Mental Health and Wellness Committee meeting.
Thank you. All right. Enfield Culture and Arts.
The next meeting is September 3rd, Tuesday, next Tuesday, a week from today.
And Chairwoman Riley, the Joint Security Committee meeting date is 9:13.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any school reports or updates yet?
Welcome back.
Yeah. Okay. Sure.
Kite, if this is the appropriate time, very, very quickly. So Jean has already talked about the pediatric dinner, so we don't have to talk about that again. In partnership with Family Resource Center and Enfield Public Schools, kindergarten camp was a huge success. This was -- this is a two-week program offered to students who are entering kindergarten with little or no preschool experience. The Kite meetings will start back up in September. And the next meeting is Wednesday, September 4th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. The location is to be decided. And please contact Brianna Bexton at 860253-6502 if you are interested. The folks at Kite would like to wish everyone a safe, healthy, and happy return to school. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. Okay, 14, approval of minutes.
Can we do this in a lump sum?
I was just going to ask Kathy, can we do that in a lump? Okay. All right, so then let's.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, the Special Board of Ed meeting minutes for June 20th, the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes for June 25th, the Special Board of Ed meeting minutes for July 2nd, the Special Board of Ed meeting minutes for July 8th, and the Special Board of Ed meeting minutes for July 9th.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Pickett, second by Ms. LeBlanc. Any discussion?
Thank you, Kathy.
Does anybody have any updates, changes, edits?
June 20th, Kathy, I would have to abstain. I wasn't present.
All right. So any other sentencing done? So show of hands for approval. There is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven against. I mean, it's seven against, oh my God. Seven for, there is none against, and two are.
That's the wrong question. I thought I was approving.
Okay. Number 15, approval of accounts and payroll. We don't have any. Okay. Correspondence and board communication, Mr. Ryder.
Yes, just one this week. We are -- we have each received an invitation, and I'll pass them out when we wrap up, for the Enfield Together Coalition. To save the date, for the Enfield Together Coalition Mental Health and Wellness Coalition kickoff meeting, it's September 27th, if you're available, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. There's a handful of guest speakers that you may find intriguing. And I'll make sure everybody gets one of these before we head out. That's all we have for this week.
Cool. And that's part of the committee that I am on, as well as people from social services and many different groups in town. And we are working with the social services grants on mental health and awareness, as well as substance abuse at all ages and stages in people's lives, all the way from birth to 100-plus. So it should be a good event. All right. Number 17, is there a need for executive session?
There is not.
None, okay. So then, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Ms. LeBlanc, second by Ms. Pickett. All in favor, raise your hands. All in favor, none against. Thank you, and good luck on the school year. Have a good night.